Good evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 30, 2022 is called to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary note the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Sambito is present. Commissioner Booth is present. Commissioner Hegidis is present. Commissioner Hamilton is present. Commissioner Wang is present. Vice Chairman Klima is present. Chairman Kish is absent. We have a quorum.
At this time, I'd like to take a vote to excuse Chairman Kish for an unavoidable absence tonight. Can I have a motion and second?
Motion by Commissioner Booth, seconded by Commissioner Hamilton. Motion passes.
By the way, item number one is going to be to approve the draft minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November 2, 2022. Can I have a motion and a second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Hegidis and a second by Commissioner Wang.
Please vote.
Motion passes.
Okay, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Do we have any speaker cards?
No.
And at this time is the opportunity for commission members to disclose any ex parte communication they may have had prior to this meeting on any items scheduled for discussion on this agenda. Well, I happen to have such. A couple of years ago, I learned either on the InFocus or something that the landscape plan was being revised. And at that time, I contacted Steve and I contacted Christopher about it. And then about a year ago, I met with Steve in his office for a while talking about this, not knowing it was going to come up before the commission. So anyway, it's out there. I'll let you know. Okay, item number two, the GSQ pad rezone has been removed from tonight's agenda and will be re-noticed when it is considered in the future. Agenda item number three is a use permit for Ono Hawaiian Restaurant. Going to open a public hearing, and Steve will present.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission members. Asif Grecia, Planning Manager, standing in tonight for Guadalupe, who has the night off, so bear with me if I stumble on anything. So what we have tonight before the commission is a use permit for drive-through restaurant, and it's within the Canyon Trails Town Center. So this is Cotton Lane, Future Loop 303 here, Yuma Road here, site's kind of right here just west of Supertarget. Surrounding it, we've got a few other drive-throughs. We have KFC, Carl's Jr., Taco Bell, just within the immediate vicinity here. Site here is about a little over an acre in size, and all of this center is zoned commercial, Canyon Trails Town Center. Access points here are highlighted in with the yellow arrows. You can see there's several access points from Cotton Lane 303 and from Yuma, signalized intersection here, as well as here and here, and then also several other access points in. And you can see there's also many different access points, ways to access the parcel from within the town center itself. So again, we're zooming in a little here, a little closer. You can see all the other drive-through restaurants that are surrounding the proposed Ono, and this is the Ono site right here. Car Wash is over here, not quite showing up on Arrow yet, but that got approved here recently under construction. Also, as you can see from this aerial view, all of the off-site improvements are in for, you know, Yuma Road, Cotton Lane over here, the center, pretty much all improved, just the pad is open. So they'll come in, the Ono will come right here, then they'll access the existing drives, all the parking lot here. And this is the proposed site for Ono. You've got about 2833 square feet building proposed, about a 950-square-foot patio. The drive aisles will come here, wrap around the north of the building, it'll be a double drive-through. Customers will order at the menu boards here, they'll wrap around the west side of the building, come here to the south, and pay and pick up here at the window, and exit out into the drive aisles and then out into the rest of the center. And again, all of these improvements, as we saw in the previous aerial, all of this is existing here, it's just a pad that needs to be developed. And these are the proposed elevations. Predominantly, this building will use the centers and colors approved for the center, the accent colors that they're proposing, this kind of teal here, as well as this type of stone here on where the drive-through window is located. But otherwise, the design, the colors, it's incorporating the colors and materials approved for the center, so it'll fit right in with the rest of the center. And so being a use permit, we had a couple of criteria that we had to look at. Will it have any adverse effects on the area? Is it compatible with the other uses in the area? And given it's a commercial center, existing commercial center with several other existing drive-through type uses and service and retail type uses, we know that the drive-through restaurant will be compatible with those, and it should not have any adverse impact on any of those uses. Nearest neighborhoods, you have Canyon Trails to the east, about 1,100 feet away. To the south, around Romans, there's residential zoning, about 900 or so feet. That's undeveloped, but zoned right now for residential. Given those distances, we did not see any impact, any adverse impact that this proposed drive-through would have on those existing or proposed residential uses. And because it's a drive-through, we consider it convenience use. There were four additional criteria that it had to meet: parcel size, compatibility of hours, traffic and access mitigation, and other type concerns. I'll probably focus here on number two, hours of operation. Again, given the distance that the existing residential is from this site, we did not see any need to propose any stipulations on hours. Basically, it was either 9:30 or 10:00 PM that it closed, so we did not see any issue with that. Again, prior traffic and access mitigation, all of the offsites are in, the roadways are improved, traffic signals are in. The only thing left to do is to develop the actual pad itself. So for a public hearing for this item, staff did conduct all the required citizen review and public hearing notices, and staff did not receive any opposition to this project as a result of any of that notice. And after reviewing this item, staff does find that it meets the valuation criteria for use permit and additional criteria for a convenience use. As such, we are recommending approval of this item. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the staff presentation. The applicant is here. They do not have a formal presentation, but are available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? And the reason we're doing this is because the drive-through, basically, yes?
Mr. Chairman, yes, this item was submitted and reviewed prior to the adoption of our new standards in June, so we had to follow the old...
Right.
But those are slowly falling off.
Yes, okay. Okay, unless someone wants to talk to the applicant, I don't see any need to bring that person up unless you want to have your face shown. No, he says no. All right. Are there any speaker cards? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and can I have a motion and a second on the proposal?
I have a motion from Commissioner Hegidis and a second from Commissioner Wang.
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item, agenda item number four, is the Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment for Landscape Standards for the city. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Steve will also resent this, as I know he's been working on it for some time.
Mr. Chairman, commission members. Asif Grecia, Planning Manager. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we have been working on this one for a while, on and off, but we're finally able to bring it close as we can to the finish line. So excited to bring this before you tonight. And also, I'd like to note that we have Andrew Peroni with... He's our water conservation coordinator, so he's been a great support and had a lot of expertise through this process. Also, we have Marissa Pellegrini with Kimberly Horn. She's been the expertise behind this update. Her firm was hired to basically do all the work for, to get, help us get this standards updated. So we have both of these experts here tonight should questions arise later on in the presentation. But just a little background to the standards. I know commission members may be familiar with some of this, so, but I'll just go over this real quickly. Majority of the city is undeveloped, about only 12% is developed, so we've got a long way to go. So these standards will have an influence on future development coming to the city. We're looking at, by 2040, a lot more people in the city as well, so some of the water efficiencies that we're looking at will have an impact there. Water Conservation Committee, Andrew's team behind a lot of this worked with them. Their recommendation plan report had some significant items come out of that. One of them was to update the landscape standards. We had the shade study from 2019. That was important, and that noted, it identified that the city lacked a lot of shade coverage for its walkways and sidewalks. Again, that was something we were hoping this landscape standards update would help address. Tree City USA in 2021 established the city's commitments to its tree coverage, and again, the landscape standards are hopefully something that further that establishment of that Tree City USA designation. September 2021, there was a joint work session with council and commission. I believe Chairman Kish was there for that presentation. Both the council and commission, they were very interested in the water efficiencies that we could look at. However, they also wanted to ensure that we maintain the look of the city, make sure we balanced efficiencies and the aesthetic appeal of the city. With this background, with this direction, update to landscape standards was deemed appropriate. And so the purpose, landscape standards, they're within the zoning ordinance for the city. That ordinance regulates all development with the city within private property. It's been around in various forms, but since 1999, so again, update is appropriate at this time, and we're hoping to address the water efficiencies, address development on private property. And we're viewing this more as an incremental update, knowing that right now, we're working on the general plan update immediately following that. We're going to do a comprehensive update of the city's development codes, so we're looking at this as almost phase one. Phase two will come in a couple of years. And so when we kicked this off, we had a city team put together. There's a lot of expertise, varied perspectives within the city. Staff from engineering, parks, public works, and planning kind of got together, looked over some things, made some recommendations throughout. And again, as Andrew is here, yeah, from Public Works and Water Conservation, they've been instrumental in helping to guide this landscape update to this point. And so areas we wanted to focus on, we wanted to create a matrix of plants that would be approvable here in the city of Goodyear, something staff could look at, help guide them as we're reviewing plans. Want to look at water efficiency. Again, we want to also maintain the city aesthetic that everyone enjoys here in Goodyear. We want to address residential properties as well. Specifically, we're going to look at HOA, common areas, and multifamily. What you've probably noticed is the landscape standards do not address single-family lots, those homeowners who own property. Pretty much, these standards are not affecting them. And lastly, we want to look at, make sure we had maintenance covered within the standards, that what's planted gets maintained and looks the same way it does several years later in the future. So some of the code revisions, I won't get too in-depth into what we did necessarily, and that would be a little, probably too much detail to bore the commission here, but I'll try to stay high level. Removed a few unnecessary definitions, whether either they were addressed better elsewhere in the code or just unnecessary, confusing, so we removed four definitions. Even though I said it's an incremental update, phase one of another of two phases that we're planning, it was easier just to rewrite the zoning ordinance, section 5.1. We were doing so much moving, reorganization, that it was getting a little too confusing, so let's just rewrite it, set it up the way we want to. And some of the standards that we've updated that I'd like to point out is new plant matrix. I'll talk a little more about that later, but again, something to help guide staff. We're going to limit turf to active recreation areas. We adjusted the tree spacing, adjusted some of the buffers in between single-family and commercial and industrial land uses and multifamily, and also addressed some of the planting standards, like standards for landscaping within retention basins or parking lots along the streets, things like that. And again, incremental update, even though we've made some changes, a lot of things were carried over, some things were revised, some things were adjusted. And again, we're looking at this as just phase one of two-phase projects, so we know more is yet to come. So the plant matrix, as you saw within the packet, those are plantings that as staff, when we look at landscape plans to come before the city, we'll check, make sure all of the plants that are on the plans match our approved plant matrix. That should not be really an issue. Our plant matrix is consistent with the state's low-water-use plant list, which is what we used before. So you won't see really any difference in what's planted last year versus next year, so it'll be the same. What this matrix does help the city is provides the characteristics of the plants, so that we know that this tree is good for a parking lot, this tree is not good, it cannot take the heat from the asphalt that comes off it. This tree is good for planting under power lines. This tree would not be good for a buffer because it's not an evergreen, so that will help guide staff and developers as we develop our landscape plans in the future. And again, you've probably heard this, the right tree, right place. Again, looking at, is this tree suitable for this location where it is? Is it a good shade tree? Again, depending on the canopy size, how it spreads. Staff will look at this a little more in-depth now that we have the tool to help guide us when we review landscape plans. And some of the water efficiencies, spoke about turf. So what this landscape update proposes is to limit turf to active areas only. Right now, we can have turf in active areas as well as ornamental turf, turf out there just for purely aesthetic purposes. This would propose to limit that. So turf would be active areas only, how we've defined that in the update, areas specifically designed for a recreational use, sized for that use, and usually improved with some kind of amenity or other improvement, like if it's a baseball field, you'll have the diamond, all the surrounding, the size that will accommodate it, things that support that use. Ornamental turf, like looking at this picture here on the top, we can see that's purely just for a nice design. It looks great, but it has no active purpose here. You can't play here or do any kind of active recreation. What the landscape ordinance update would propose would be the bottom picture, right, nice entry, all desert landscape. And again, we're doing that for, we can see that there's a huge savings of water when we look at overseeded turf versus a desert landscaping. We're saving a lot of water with this change. We're also increasing tree spacing. We require trees along streetscapes in buffers. We're going to increase that requirement by five feet. So right now, it's one tree per 25 linear feet of length. We're going to go to one per 30. Small change, but it does make a difference in terms of trees. So typical commercial lot, maybe 150 feet, so we have one less tree. But if you talk on a quarter-mile length of streetscape, that's nine less trees. So that was, this is felt to be a balance of the water efficiencies while also making sure we do have tree coverage within the city. We are providing for trees along our sidewalks and within our active areas. So a small increase, but should provide some water efficiency savings. And so with all of these changes, we did have to make sure we went out to development community, got their input, made sure that they were aware of this change. So over the years, we've had several developers forums where staff from Development Services meets with the development community. This has been brought up several times, making sure we get the word out. We officially circulated it to the development community this June. In July, we also met with the Home Builders Association. So during the summer months, staff did have several inquiries from the development community. We did collaborate with the Home Builders Association. I will say that we were able to work together on most items. A lot of them were cleanups, clarifications. Staff, would you please tell us what you mean here? So we were able to work with the development community on that. Probably the only one of note that I should bring up is that we could not meet was Home Builders Association, they were worried that the amount, the limit on turf in residential subdivisions, could we increase that? Staff's answer was, at this time, we feel that we're at a good spot. The number that we're proposing, we don't want to change it at this time. So we're maintaining our turf maximum of 15% within residential subdivisions. Also, because this is a public hearing, we did everything that's required by the state and city requirements, posting newspaper on our website, and to date, no opposition to what we're proposing here tonight. So we are recommending approval. We do feel that what's here tonight meets the recommendation of the Water Conservation Committee, that it helps promote water efficiency, it promotes the goals and objectives of the general plan, and provides a good incremental update to the city's landscape standards. If the commission should vote this forward, it would go to city council on December 12. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's pretty much my presentation. I know the commission may have questions, and again, we have Andrew and Marissa here as well, their expertise, if there's any questions that they can answer.
Anyone have any questions for staff? Oh, I do. Okay, there you go. Go ahead.
How does this, the tree spacing, compare to other Westside cities?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, we're, we saw everything similar to ours, up to 40 feet, and we contemplated higher, but knowing we had just done a shade study, and that was an important aspect to have that 50% coverage of our walkways, we didn't feel comfortable going all the way up to 40 feet, so we went from the 25 to 30. But it's in line with other cities.
Buckeye, Litchfield, Avondale?
Yes, sir.
On talking about turf, I assume there are going to be people that will be looking at the newer turf that are coming out. I know in my HOA, we've done a study now for a year on some new turf for our golf course, which will hopefully reduce the amount of water to be used by about 30%, and will in fact, stay green enough throughout most of the winter, so it won't be overseeded. So you're going to save that water, too. So it's a new turf called Tiff Tuff, and it'll be used on a golf course. We're going to rip out one of our whole courses next summer and put the new turf down. You and I had talked about butterfly-friendly plants, and that was, caught my eye when I first saw this, about the update a couple of years ago. At the same time, Mayor Lord was, had a quote talking about, she hoped that in some time in the future, that Goodyear will be known as a butterfly-friendly city. And I see in the plant matrix, it's about 50/50 plants that are pollinators versus non-pollinators. I assume the pollinators means they're insect-friendly. Person back there might know, but, and there are some that are more than the others. They mentioned oleanders as being pollinator. I've had one of, several of those in my yard now for 22 years, the landscaper put in, and for 22 years, I've never seen a single bug on them, and I read that they just don't go there. But four years ago, I planted a desert milkweed, and I have multitude of species of bugs and butterflies that will come onto that plant from all over, just to my little plant, which stays green all year, has flowers, and doesn't require any water. It's a great deal, so I hope they'll continue to refine some of this and try to get as much of the matrix to include, you know, the true butterfly and insect-friendly and low-water-use plants that we can. My two cents.
Mr. Chairman, did you, would you like any further discussion on the plant matrix and the pollinator-type shrubs?
No, I was even going to think about, you know, having a stipulation. We have such, so much of a percentage of that to be used, and I was hoping this was going to move quicker because all of the new data centers and so forth, I thought those would be great places to have, you know, a butterfly and insect-friendly plants that no one would be around, you know, to bother them, and, you know, I'm not an outrageous environmentalist that I'd say, you know, you have to do this no matter what the cost. Well, it doesn't cost anymore because the plants cost the same. I know how much the desert milkweed costs versus an oleander, pretty much two or three cents difference in the cost at the, at a retail market, so I just, you know, I just hope that when the people are looking at that sort of thing, that they'll say, okay, I think because of loss of habitat, maybe it'd be nice if we have more of the butterfly pollinator plants versus the non-pollinators.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, probably the only thing I can add to that is that that was the purpose of the matrix, to help staff. None of us on the staff are trained landscapers. None of us on the staff are trained landscape or professional landscape architects, we're planners. So this tool with Marissa and her team's help, that will help guide us and point us in the direction of the plants that are pollinator-friendly. So we do have an objective in the new standards that we would like developers to in their retention basins. Like you said, Mr. Chairman, that is a good place to plant pollinator-friendly type plants. So we built that in, so hopefully as a staff, that's something we can, knowing it's important to the city, something that we can move forward with.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Anybody have any questions for our water people or our plant people? Any speakers cards? Anyone from the audience like to make a comment? Okay, the public hearing is closed. I'd like to have a motion and a second.
A motion from Commissioner Booth, a second by Commissioner Heggetis.
And all of you vote, please.
Motion passes.
All right, now we're down to business items. Item number five is a presentation by Anu Peroni, Water Conservation Coordinator on the new Water Resources Department and Water Conservation Measures. You have the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. Just going to talk briefly about some, a couple items. One of them is related to the Public Works reorganization, very brief, and then I'll be going over what we've been working on on the water conservation side, which ties into what Steve presented earlier about the design guidelines, that's kind of a part of that bigger picture, and how it relates to some of the work that you all do here. So the, you may have been informed recently about the, we have reorganization of our Public Works Department, and it's pretty simple. We had one Public Works Department, and now there's, it's split into two, and one of them is the Water Services Department. So that includes water and wastewater, stormwater, environmental services side, and water resources and water conservation. So that's one side of the new Public Works, if you will. It'll have a director, and then this is other, the other divisions that are now within the other departments that are now in the department that's called Public Works. So essentially, all that's happening is Water Services is being split out on its own. And the reasons for this are essentially just the size and the scale with the growth that we're going through in Goodyear, and then additionally, in the Water Service area. This helps to make sure that we're running things efficiently with the right kind of leadership as well. So having that individual leadership and direction is more appropriate right now at this size. And then the finances, this is just related to the budgeting and things like that, that will take effect coming up in the next fiscal year. So before I move on, is there any questions that I can answer related to this specific topic?
I had taken a tour a couple of years ago of the wastewater plant and recycling. If I remember correctly, is all of the reclaimed water recharged into the ground, or is there any use for reclaimed water like other agents, other cities you do?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's a great question. We, the reclaimed water in Goodyear has a couple of different destinations. Some, if you were in the Straight Mountain Ranch area, that reclaimed water actually belongs to that developer-owner, and they reuse all of their water for irrigation on their landscape. And then the treated wastewater, reclaimed water, that is essentially in the central planning area of Goodyear, that water is recharged primarily into the ground and then reused in our groundwater wells at some point, you know, it kind of goes in the ground, gets filtered and moved back out. And then there is also some portions of that reclaimed water that is, I don't know the exact term for it, but it's sort of an exchange that works with the farmers further down. So any water that we cannot recharge or reuse, get, they take some of it and they use it to irrigate some of their fields. We do not have a lot of areas that use the reclaimed water for irrigation in the central planning area, and that's mostly due to the infrastructure that we have currently in place. But the short answer to your question is, yes, all of the water that is treated is reused in some form, so none of it is wasted. And part of our role in the Water Services and Water Resources Department especially is to maximize that use of the reclaimed water, to make sure that we're using it as effectively as we can. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So I will just move on now to the specific water conservation portion. And I was looking at this in relation to some of the work that you do in the zoning and the planning and some of the things that you're maybe seeing, and how we look at that from the water side and try to maximize that efficiency. So one of the things is that water use and land use are just, are tied together, necessarily tied together. So depending on what is being built out there, that's going to have a huge impact on what you can expect the water use signature, if you will, to be applied to that. And in terms of new and existing, if the land use changes or is proposed to change, that that does impact the overall water resources that we have available. So anytime that there's a land use that was proposed for something and is adapted for something else, that could potentially impact how much water is now, needs to be allocated to that. So just depending on the frequency of how much that happens, that's what we look at on the water resource side for both new and then, of course, existing. People, and my role in the conservation side, efficiency staff, we work quite a bit, pretty all year round, to really maximize how efficiently the water is being used, depending on the use type. So bringing this all back, essentially, the use type of the land throughout the city is what dictates our water resource needs and the water resource availability. And then my role specifically in conservation is to minimize any waste that might be happening in all of those. Similarly, on the landscape design standards and things like that, we really try to make sure that the water that's going out there is really being maximized. And we adapt depending on the direction that the city is going and the priorities that we have moving forward as a city. So we are constantly looking at what is our existing water demand, what is the committed demand, so that some of the areas that are already committed to a certain type of land use, but we need to make sure that we have that water available for them to use when they get built. And then the anticipated demand is really related to build out, so that it looks at the very, very long range. So that's kind of where we try to bring all these things together, not just the water resources, but saying, okay, how can we really make these land uses as efficient as we can? Because they're going to require some measure of water. So specifically on the conservation or efficiency side, we take direction from the Water Conservation Committee's recommendation, and I'm not going to go into each of these, this is just a summary of their recommendation, and they are really just ongoing initiatives that we take into consideration as we work throughout the city. And of course, the big one, the number one here that on their list is what we just talked about earlier, the landscape design standards. So this is a very, very impactful way to be water efficient in Goodyear because we have so much area that is not yet built. So the categories of water use, kind of also relating it to the land use as well, we have our existing single-family residential, we have our commercial municipal and our apartment multi-family, those types of areas. Large landscapes, so think like the HOAs, really large communities, parks, anything that's just a really large landscape. And then we have our planned development that's not yet built. So each of these land use types impact water consumption in a different way, and so we take a different approach depending on who it is that we're working with, whether it's existing or it's not yet existing, and then what's the type of land use that's happening there. So all of these have an expected water footprint, so part of our role is to really maximize the efficiency of that water footprint and to help these existing land users to really understand how much water is going out there and if it's in line with what we expected. So we're always trying to reconcile those things, and so that when we plan for water resources going forward based on the land use types, we have a really accurate idea of if something is going to get built or constructed, we have a pretty good idea of how much water is going to go to that. So on the single-family residential side, we do quite a bit of outreach and programs. If you've been living in Goodyear for a while, hopefully, hopefully you've heard of some of these. So we have our home water checks, which we visit in person to anyone who requests that, do some leak detection for them at their home, inside and outside, and then we help them address anything related to landscape watering, help them water their plants as efficiently as we can. So this goes back into that kind of single-family individual water use on their parcel. Additionally, we create home water budgets that are customized to each individual's home, so that gives a resident how, an idea of how much water they would expect to use for their specific home, and that's typically based on how much yard you have and what kind of plants you have, less so on what your neighbors use. So this is where we really try to help people dial it in as best they can. We also have a program right now that's a smart home water device, so we work with a product called Flume, and this essentially is automated leak detection with really high resolution water data, one-minute data, that helps anyone who has it installed in their home to see leaks much more quickly. And again, this kind of loops back into, the faster we can catch unexpected water use, then the better we can plan for water resources because we have a much better idea of how much a certain land use or home will use in general. And we also have a program where we sponsor free automatic rain pause devices. Essentially, this just pauses an irrigation timer from running during a rain event. And then we have a pretty new program that's weather-based irrigation controllers. So this is, these are your same unit as your irrigation timer, except that it automatically adjusts every single day depending on the weather. So this really helps with keeping up with the plant water needs in an appropriate way. Typically, it'll water at the proper times of year much more accurately than any of us can trying to go out there every day and make a small adjustment. We additionally have these leak detection or home water efficiency kits that we offer to our residents, and they include just things to help people be more efficient at home and find leaks. We send out high water consumption notifications reviewing how much water is being consumed and then running a report to anybody who's really kind of way outside of a range, and then letting them know about it. And a lot of times, people don't know because the leaks are usually something unexpected and not planned for. We do quite a bit of outreach related to videos and media, working with our great communications team, and we do public workshops for our residents specifically related to a lot of these topics. And then we try to get out there in the public as much as we can in those bigger events that either parks will host or regional events as well, so that people can really come and talk to us. We get quite a few interesting questions related to water conservation and resources. A lot of it is related to building and construction as well, so we get to engage with the public in that way. And then we have our youth education as well. We always try to reach anybody who's growing up in our neighborhoods and help them to bring them an understanding of the importance of water and water efficiency. So that's on, and then some of these are related to just more outreach, some very general things, using all the outlets available to us, websites and social media. Additionally, we got the solid waste trucks, they have some information about water on there as well. Hopefully, you've seen maybe one or two things on our main billboard on the freeway. We also reach out to anybody who's a new water account holder. So in Goodyear, we have primarily two water providers, there's Liberty in the area we're sitting now, and then Goodyear Water, where I'm a part of, which is in the southern portion of Goodyear, all the way into the newest planning area as well. So anytime that there's a new water account, whether it's an existing piece of land or new piece of land, we try to make sure that we get them information about all these programs so that they're aware of the fact that they live in a desert, but also that we value water efficiency and give them all these resources. And then the mayor, Mayor Pizzillo, did a proclamation for Water Awareness Month this year, which was great, and then we partner with Liberty as much as we can related to efficiency. They have the same goals that we do as a city as a whole, and so we try to partner with them on water efficiency as much as we can. On our larger commercial sites, it's a little bit of a different approach. Outreach and things like that are not really as strong. These tend to be a little bit more technical, so our strategies tend to be more focused around specifically addressing leaks and leak detection. Again, this is really impactful related to how much water is going to a parcel of land for a long time into the future. So we can have a really efficiently built place, but if they have a leak, now they're using more water on that place than any of us expected them to use. So our job is to help get in there, try and get ahead of that, communicate with them. We offer onsite evaluations, help them if they want to do some upgrades or they'd like to, you know, lower their water consumption or just save money, that's part of our role as well. And then we also are looking into increasing some of those incentives for these types of commercial, larger facilities. See here's some of the examples of places that we've already worked with and continue to work with. And then more on our water distribution side, so not necessarily an end-use customer, but in that same vein, we have, of course, all of our distribution lines running throughout the city, so we audit those every, throughout the year, every year, to make sure we don't have some ongoing leaks and we're losing water in that way as well. And we have, this is one of our most impactful areas for water efficiency, is our large landscapes. Primarily, this is going to be, you're going to see it most visually in our communities, our HOAs, in our parks as well, but basically, any landscape that you see out there is going to be irrigated for the most part. And so part of our role is to help with getting those to be as efficient as they can. These landscapes require water because they're in environments that are, even with the toughest plants, can require some water throughout the year because of the extra beating that they take from just being in the urban environment. So our job is to help these communities, especially the HOAs, to understand how much water they need for their specific landscape. So our job is not to make the landscape look bad, what we do is we help them through providing some detailed analysis if they have some leaks. We've done 17 of these on a large scale, and then this is one of the ongoing programs that we have, which is landscape water budgeting. So basically, we identify for them how much water their landscape needs every single month, and then provide them with how much water it actually used. And that way, they can, that community can really be empowered to take action, to be as efficient as they can, have a good-looking landscape, a little bit more predictability in water consumption. So that's good for us on, from a planning side, but also good for them on a budget and landscape aesthetic side. Meter replacement, and this is important because any water meters that age out tend to under-read or stop reading completely. So then that means that we aren't really seeing how much water is being used in a real sense. So we try to really stay on top of these. Our distribution team does a great job of catching these and staying on top of them as much as possible. And then our parks and right-of-ways, so these are also very important from a land use perspective. Anytime we're thinking about construction of a new park, typically we'll work with our parks department in understanding what are your water sources available to you, and then I work with them on the conservation efficiency side in the long term to understand how much water they're using every month throughout the year from that point forward so that they can really make sure they're using the right amount of water. And our parks does a really great job. They're typically very efficient on their sites. And then lastly, what we've addressed today is anything that's unbuilt. So this is where the landscape guidelines really come into, the design standards come into play in a huge way, and the things that we look at as a plan reviewers and any staff, and then the things that come before you as well. These new developments that are constructed have an impact, a footprint that they're going to utilize for water. So the more efficient that we can help them to be from the very beginning, the better it is for Goodyear in the longer term. We can really stretch our water supplies that much further while still maintaining a really high quality of life that we have. And as Steve alluded to as well, anytime we're looking at this as a phased approach, we can learn from the things that we've done in this update and apply maybe some better efficiencies, potentially even in the next round as well. So the things that are coming up next as relation to water efficiency that we're working on kind of in the more immediate future is a scorecard on water conservation. So basically, this will be an analysis to make sure that all these programs that I just talked about, that we're actually saving the water that we expect to save, are we using our resources in the right way, both our staff time and our budget resources. And then it can help us to utilize a little bit more targeted approach to where we're looking for those water savings. So if you look at the, for example, how much water is used in different areas of the city, our single-family homes always use the biggest amount, so we spend time there. However, even though our commercial buildings might have a smaller total consumption, it's still a really large amount per parcel. So then we can still save a lot of water by just working with one person or a handful of people. So that's why we tend to look at these metrics as much as we can to make sure we're approaching it in the right way. To that note, expanding our commercial and non-residential programs is in the works, including some potential incentives. There's a lot of growth in that sector as well. And we're also working with, if you are in the Goodyear Water area and you receive a paper bill, you may have noticed that one of the pages has landscape watering recommendations, and they could be kind of a little bit confusing, so we're going to revisit. and they could be kind of a little bit confusing, so we're going to revisit those and just try to make it a little bit more clear by giving residents an idea based on their lot size, maybe how much water they can expect to use, because lot size really dictates if you're going to be using water more than your indoor use. And then we are in the progress of a lawn removal incentive program focused around non-residential, so primarily this is our HOAs, and a lot of our communities are already taking action, as you alluded to earlier, Mr. Chairman, about either looking at the lawn type or removing lawn or finding more efficiencies. So we're just trying to help them facilitate that and then also help to make sure that as much as was within our power to help them to make a good-looking landscape in replacement of that lawn so that there's not too much of a difference there as well. And as Steve mentioned earlier as well, there's a lot of areas that are out there that are underutilized or not utilized at all, that are lawn areas or high-water use that some communities are deciding to, to remove on their own just to save water or money typically, and maintenance costs as well. So the design standards address some of that and try to get ahead of that additional resource of now removing something that was installed and just say, maybe just kind of get it right on that first try. So that's kind of, a lot of those things are coming together with relation to that. And that is what I have for today. So that was quite a bit of information. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
You know, I looked at the draft of the conservation program, and, you know, as we look into the future, there's discussion in a lot of municipalities about the use of artificial turf, even to the point that the city of Scottsdale, as you know, put out a position statement discouraging its use. So where are we with that as a community?
Commissioner, that's a, that's a really great question, and we do have a lot of discussion generated by that exact topic. Currently, in Goodyear, we don't have a strong position, if you will, related to artificial turf. Typically, how we, when we get questions directed towards us, we'll usually just work with either a resident or commercial property to help them to assess whether that is the right type of landscape for them, for their use. For instance, there are areas that are, that you want to look really green and nice consistently, but you're not really intending to use it in an active way, or there's a lawn area that used to be, that is now under shade, so it's not really growing there. So those areas might utilize artificial lawn really well. And then on the other side, you might say, should we use an athletic field for artificial turf? And a lot of schools sometimes do that because there's a huge dollar savings. However, it has to be weighed with the, is that best for, you know, the students that are playing on that surface? Is it safe for them? Is it, is it too hot? And so really, it comes down to, at least in Goodyear, it's up to the individual homeowner or landowner what they decide to do. And the way that we help them is really just help them assess, is that the right, well, right plant for the right place, right? Even though it's not a plant. In terms of how it performs, it performs kind of like hardscape in a way, it's just a little more permeable. But, you know, it's going to be something that'll be a little bit warmer, obviously, than you're either a desert landscaper or lawn, obviously, but it's going to be lower maintenance than any of those as well. So it just depends on the individual user. We don't have a program that would sponsor installation of artificial turf right now. I'm not to, not to say that it wouldn't be part of a discussion that we would have, but we'd have to kind of really go out there and understand, is this what we would like to do? We don't want to go against our other goals, which sometimes is how other cities end up in that place. It actually conflicts with other goals such as increasing tree shade canopy. So sometimes, depending on how folks install those, they could be removing trees at the same time as they're putting in artificial turf. And some cities have goals related to reducing the urban heat island effect, so that has an impact, but, you know, installing rock also has an impact on that. So if that's a concern of an individual, and we've had discussions like this with our communities and HOAs as well, and so we'll often recommend other strategies for them to say, well, you can still remove the lawn and maybe use an organic mulch instead of a rock mulch or something like that, that's still in line with the aesthetic goals that they're trying to achieve, but doesn't cause any additional stress. So that's very long-winded answer to your question, but the simple answer is that we don't, we don't have a strong position on one side or the other, we really just try to make sure that that's the right choice for them. And typically, the concerns we hear is they just want to reduce maintenance, and then the second, they want to save some money on their water, and then it's about water efficiency. So those other things typically take a little bit of a top seat in terms of the reasons why people are interested in that. Great question, though.
Anything else for Andrew? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to have two minutes of your time after the meeting, if I could.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Were there any staff communications?
I don't know if you have anything, Steve. I have something really quick. Just to let you know, our next meeting, and it is on your script, but our next meeting will actually be held in the work session room, which is right outside these doors. They're just going to be doing some work in here on the dais, so just, just so you know.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commission Members, Alyssa, that meeting is January 11th. We're hoping to bring before you Chris Bridges, he's our transportation planning manager. There was some discussion last meeting when we talked about items that we could bring before the commission, informational items that you may find interesting. So Chairman Kish asked if someone could talk to the commission about what is a traffic study? How does that work with all of the items that come before you? We always mention this was reviewed with a traffic study, so there was some interest in knowing how that worked, as well as some of the transportation issues going around with the city and wider area. So we're hopefully working with Chris on that to get him before you. He's very knowledgeable, has a lot of information that he can share. Then item number two, staff change.
Oh, yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Formal announcement came out. All of you know Alex Listinsky, senior planner. She is taking on a new role with the city. She's going to be a business analyst, working with Alyssa and her team, taking charge of a lot of the continuous improvement items that are very important to development services and the city at large, so she will be immersed in that. Unfortunately, she will no longer be a senior planner working with us. So our loss, but Alyssa's in the departments and city's game. So she's still with us, but in a different role. We will start recruitment for a senior planner here shortly, so we're going to be shorthanded for a little bit until we get that position filled. So if, in your travels, if you know anybody who's interested, please send them my way.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held January 11th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the Goodyear City Hall Work Session Room, right outside the hall here. No further business, this meeting is adjourned.